I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. We'll stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passes. So our first business tonight will be a public hearing and discussion of the resolution and motion for the Mayor Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation. And I will ask Jessica to please read the notice as it was written in the paper.
City of Columbus, Public Hearing Notice, Vacation of Drainage and Utility Easement. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Columbus City Council on Wednesday, January 23, 2019, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to review a request for the City Council to initiate proceedings by a majority of property owners to vacate the public drainage and utility easements as described below. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Property owner, Troy and Sarah Meyer. Property location, 19158 Lion Street Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota, Lot 4, Block 1, Del Monaco Preserve. Signed Elizabeth Merzko, zoning administrator. Published in the Forest Lake Times on January 3rd and October 19th.
Thank you. So would the Meyers come up, please, and sit in the hot seat? Would you give your name and address for the record, please?
Troy and Sarah Meyer. 19158 Lion Street Northeast, Wyoming, or Columbus.
Thank you. And will you just give us a brief rundown of what you're asking for from the council tonight?
We would like to put up a pole barn in our backyard. And there's a drainage and utility easement that runs directly in the backyard. And based on easements and septic property lines, the only location we can put it is described on the drawing. Without going in front of the house, which would be a separate issue. The location marked is not impacting any wetlands. I've had the wetland specialist come out two different occasions. And she is okay with that location of the building.
All right. So now we discuss, or we ask for anyone from the audience who'd like to comment?
Mr. Mayor, you could take questions of the applicant and then testimony from the public.
I have no questions. I've discussed this quite a bit with staff. Does anyone else have questions regarding what it's all about?
Can I add just one thing?
Yep.
We've lived in Columbus since 2005. We built our house and we've been saving up for this building for three, four years. It'll be a nice building. It'll match the house. We're looking at 40 feet by 60 feet.
All right.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just in discussing this matter with the administrator, the, it looks like the original easement was overly broad in, you know, its prescription. And so that's why the staff would support the vacation.
Yeah, thank you. So now, if anyone from the audience would like to be heard? So let me ask you guys to step back. And we will take testimony from the audience, or from the... Sure, please come up and then do your name and address for the record, please.
I don't want to freak out our neighbors. We moved into the area a year ago and we've actually never met even though we have the adjoining property. So our concern with this is actually not the building itself. We support people's rights to build on their own property. We think that they've done due diligence in terms of protecting the actual wetlands. Our concern is actually, if you look here on, we have the northern property, which is 9664192nd Avenue Northeast.
Okay.
I am Jolene Kennon, and this is my husband, David Kennon. Okay. So where they're putting the proposed building, which, yeah, if you go over a little bit, would be right, if you can see, kind of scribbled in there, you see kind of a pond. You can probably all recognize that. And then if you look to the north where our house is, you'll see our backyard fence going around the property. Thank you. So for us, the northeast corner of that property shares that frog pond there, and it kind of comes back to a lower level land. The plat maps show it pretty clearly, which means that that corner is where the spring runoff comes into our property. Okay? And that's something to be expected. We work with nature, right? But when we are then going to be putting a 60-foot-long roof line with an unknown slope there, our concern is about possible drainage from the site impacting our area because it's going to go right down that hill. And so we don't want to have any sort of flash flooding concerns or concerns about, you know, something that's seasonal water turning into something that we no longer have a usable backyard. So what we are requesting of the City Council is if you can add a condition to the accessory building's permit requiring that the proposed building has gutters on the north side, which then would direct water away from that property line. And with that addition, we would fully support this building because it would preserve our property rights as well as their own.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have anything to add? If not, then I will close this portion of the hearing with the right to reopen it if necessary. And then we'll discuss. So Elizabeth, I have a question. So basically, the reason that they had to have Becky Wozniak come out would just be inaccurate wetland delineation or inaccurate easement to begin with, correct? Or overbroad or...
When the Meyers approached the city in order to build an accessory building, it's standard practice that they go out to the Watershed District to determine whether or not they're going to impact wetlands. When Becky was invited to the property because there was a drainage and utility easement, when she was out there, she discovered that the easement was overly broad, or at least she felt it was overly broad in that the line or the area that they chose for the accessory building was not wetland, and then determined what the boundaries that she was willing to recommend for vacation, and she did. And that's when they were able to come up with the location of the accessory building. So we do have a recommendation from Becky Wozniak, who's from Anoka Conservation District, who's a wetland specialist, indicating that the area that they want to put the accessory building is not wetland and that she made the recommendation for vacating it. Because the only purpose for the easement is to protect wetlands, and it's not a wetland.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Dennis, did you get a chance to look at the topography of all this?
I didn't have a chance to look at it in great detail. Looking at the adjoining property right now, contours. I don't think the last request is unreasonable. And if the council feels that way, I'd also add, direct the drainage to the west or to the back where the contours seem to naturally go.
Would the applicant be opposed to adding gutters to the one side?
Are we able to speak?
They should come to the mic to speak. Yep. So it's recorded.
I think it's inaccurate where we were looking here. We're not up here. We're $3,000 into this process and we haven't even begun to dig. We still have the application process to do, but we had to get a resurvey. That was $1,000. We paid $1,600 to the City of Columbus to get this process going. We still have the building permit to go. I mean, we don't have an endless supply of money here. Gutters would be great. You know, not everybody has gutters on their house. This is a pole building. It's going to look nice. But I wasn't planning on putting gutters on, and I don't think it's necessary. It's not wetland. There's going to be no drainage issues. We're not going to be anywhere near the red line, which is the property line.
They had a lot of problems in the past with runoff going on people's property, other people's property, so...
Well, there's no runoff now. The building's not going to create more runoff. I'm not an expert in that, but...
Building an impervious surface creates more runoff, or more concentrated runoff. But there's not, I don't have enough information and detail to see exactly where your building is going and how that, where that runoff's going to go. Whether it's a gutter, whether it's a drainage swale. I mean, you're going to have to do some grading for the building anyway, so...
I mean, I do have, I don't... Do you have the easement copy that shows where the... You got that? Okay.
Yeah, bring it up, please, and give it to Elizabeth.
We've already paid for a soil sample, too. We've got that done. That was another $250 to have done. And that's part of the application process to do a building.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I could clarify the process. So there's a couple steps here. The decision before you tonight is whether to vacate the easement. And that is not an action on which you can make conditions. However, you could direct the staff to look at whether to condition the permit for the building. So I just want to clarify, you either say yes or no to the vacation of the easement, and then you can provide a direction to staff. So I just wanted to separate those two.
And the direction would be to look at the topography and decide if it's an issue or not?
Right, determine whether you, whether the staff believes based on topography whether there'll be a stormwater impact. If so, then you could require mitigation. If you don't first determine that there's an impact, there's no need to mitigate. So I think that would be the, if you want to give that direction to staff, they could carry that out in the permitting.
Very good, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to vacate the easement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
It would be to adopt the resolution.
Does it have a number?
It's 1901.
Aye.
All right, do it again. Make a motion to adopt the resolution, 1901.
1901, adopt the resolution.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So this is your first step of this. We have granted the easement vacation. But then, Counselor, how do I direct staff to...
You could just informally, as a consensus, the council could direct staff to look at the stormwater impact since it's been raised in the public hearing. And then staff would take it from there and determine based upon the topography and what probably the building official's understanding about whether or not there'd be an impact. The building official could then condition the permit on redirecting the water away from the neighbors if there is an impact, and it could be done by swale or otherwise. I don't want to get too far into engineering, but if the engineer agrees.
That sums it up pretty well.
Okay.
So is that our responsibility to do, or is that something you guys would do for us? Investigate the impact?
Well, this, between the building official and myself, we'll be looking at the impact.
And we don't want you to spend more than you have to, but...
Appreciate that, thanks.
We also have a lot of trouble in Columbus with people's runoff. And you're better off to do it right the first time, if you have to do it, than to have problems later on. So with that, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next business tonight will be the Planning Commission Report. And Janet, I'll have you start.
Do we want to do the motion for this first?
Oh, yep, never mind. So first, we need a motion to accept Garth Sternberg's Planning Commission resignation letter, which is on page 13 of our packet. If you haven't read it, you can take a quick look at it. And then I would like a motion to accept it.
Motion to accept Garth Sternberg's resignation?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that passes. Then, now we're ready for the discussion of the Personnel Committee Report on Planning Commission Interviews and Recommendations. Janet, that's you.
All right. Planning, or the Personnel Committee members, which consisted of Mayor Priner, Elizabeth Merzko, and Janet Haglund, met on January 16th to interview candidates for the Planning Commission. There were a total of six candidates for two reappointments, and those would be for Jim Watson and Pam Wolosky, and one vacancy created when Jesse Priner was elected mayor. Prior to the interviews, we learned Mr. Watson withdrew his letter requesting reappointment. We also learned that applicant Lynette Carver-Quinn withdrew her application due to an unexpected family need that required her immediate attention. And Garth Sternberg submitted his resignation from the Planning Commission. Should be noted that Ms. Carver-Quinn requested that her application be retained for future consideration. Therefore, there were four candidates interviewed on the 16th, one for the reappointment and for two vacancies. Mr. Sternberg's resignation will have to be formally accepted by the City Council before we can fill that anticipated vacancy. At the, at this time, we're putting forward two Planning Commissioner candidates for council consideration. Ms. Wolosky, who is willing to serve a third term on the Planning Commission, and Mr. Hanagraff, who had previously served as a Planning Commissioner in Columbus. We will reopen the application process to expand the pool of candidates for the remaining vacancies and set up another round of interviews as soon as possible. And then lastly, we'd like to express our deep appreciation to Mr. Watson for his service on planning, as a Planning Commissioner, and to Mr. Sternberg for his service as Chair of the Planning Commission. Be happy to have any, answer any questions.
Anyone?
Mayor and council members, the next step in the process now is Pam Wolosky is here this evening, and she would be considered a reappointment. And then you have one vacancy. The bylaws outline that you will interview or ask any questions of nominations and/or recommendations made by the Personnel Committee. Pam is here tonight if you have any questions. Unfortunately, Ron Hanagraff was not able to attend. He just recently had surgery and is home and can't be moved. So he has extended his phone number, which is why the phone is on the table. So if there are further questions of him for interviewing or whatever you feel is appropriate, he's indicated us that we can call him, and he would be able to answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone feel they want to ask Pam or Mr. Hanagraff anything more or different? And if not, then I would like a motion to appoint both Pam Wolosky and Ron Hanagraff to the Planning Commission, to the Columbus Planning Commission.
Do we need to do one at a time?
Well, you can do, if you want to do them as one motion, you can. Or if you want to split them, you can do that as well.
Your choice.
We can do one. We can do them both at one time, I guess. I'll make the motion and appoint Pam and Ron Hanagraff for reappointment to Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing no opposition, we will welcome them to the Planning Commission.
For just one clarification, Pam would be reappointed to a three-year term, and Ron Hanagraff would be appointed to a one-year term.
Thank you. And so, Elizabeth, can you put, can you put a notice on the, or maybe you already have, on the website and on the sign-out side to hopefully drum up a few more applicants?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we're on to the public open forum. Anyone here like to speak?
Bill Princeton with the Rice Creek Snowmobile Club, and we have a...
Microphone, please. Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Bill Princeton with the Rice Creek Snowmobile Club.
And may we have your address, too?
You won't like it, no. 7023 256th Street in Wyoming, Minnesota.
All right.
So first of all, we'd like to thank and appreciate the City Council for the temporary trail they allowed us to do last October when the roundabout came in and took away our permanent trail we had. So at this point, we're requesting permission for a reroute. The Rice Creek Trail is a DNR authorized trail and a vital connector for snowmobile users going north, south, east, and west due to insufficient trail right-of-way as a result of the new Lake Drive Roundabout. The Rice Creek Snowmobile Trail Association is requesting permission to reroute the existing snowmobile trail right as follows. The trail would proceed south on Lake Drive, Frumps Lake Drive, to the east side of Zurich Street for about 400 feet, would then stop, cross Zurich to the west, go into the grassy area, and proceed to follow the power line easements to the south. The right-of-way reroute is intended to be a safe solution for snowmobiles and automotive traffic. The route leverages the Lake Drive traffic lights, which will have proper snowmobile signage maintained by the Rice Creek Trail Association in accordance with snowmobile safety regulations and best practices, including but not limited to stop-ahead signs, directional signs, stop signs, and no snowmobiling signs where necessary. And for those of you that don't know, the Rice Creek Snowmobile Trail has been an organization for 36 years, running trails from Ham Lake to Forest Lake to Columbus to Lionel Lakes to Centerville to Hugo to Scandia, 73 miles. And we've never had a situation, and we do carry a million and a half dollar indemnification clause fund if something should happen. That would indemnify the city of anything unless the city caused a problem. On the map, as you can see, the arrows there, if you're coming from the west and come up to Zurich, you would not turn on the east as we are currently doing on a temporary trail that was authorized for one year. And so that trail will be abandoned March 31st. And then with the light, would cross over across Zurich and then turn to the right and go down the, the road right-of-way between Zurich Street and the property owner there. And it's about 400 feet to the point where you can see the power line if you look real careful. The, there's a pole there, kind of at the bottom of the page, a white tee pole. That's the power line. They're going across the kitty corn across the road. So we would stop there, cross over, get into the grassy area, and proceed. If people were coming back the other direction, they would do the same thing, come up to a stop sign on the west side of the road, cross over the road, go up to the stop sign at Lake Drive, and using again the, the traffic lights, cross over Lake Drive and get on the trail that then goes west on Lake Drive. So other situations is that, so that snowmobilers, when they're crossing the sidewalk, wouldn't tear up the sidewalk. In about five places in Lionel Lakes, especially by Shawmanix Golf Course, we cover the 10-foot bike path with rubber matting every year where the trail crosses, and we've never had a problem with the trail getting tore up there. So, and we have available mats to do that. We put them down in the fall and take them up in the spring, so. And we would continue to use the current reroute that we're using till the end of the season, March 31st. And then what we'd really like to do is get the permission to do this because most of this land we're going through is wetland, not wetlands, but wet land. And we need to get it done before the frost goes out this spring. We need to get our signs up for next year because we cannot travel in that in the summertime. You can only travel when it's frozen. So that's kind of our situation. Any questions? Anybody else?
I'll start. So when you're under, running underneath the power line, going south, southwest a little bit?
Yeah.
Where does that end up and what happens?
Did I give you a copy of that? No, I mean...
I've got one of these.
Is it the little one?
He has it covered on another map. He'll bring it up, too.
I'm going to give that to Elizabeth to put up, maybe we can all...
On the overhead? Oh, okay. Okay.
So once we cross over Zurich and get into the grassy area, the black line there is the new trail. And we would cross a little bit of, of Jeannie Sax's land on the very corner there. Then we'd get into Ronnie Ace's property. Then we'd get into four sections of Anoka County property, or three. And then we'd get into Mr. Priner's property. And then we'd get into...
Impranto, isn't it next?
Yeah. Part now, I think it is. And then we would go over into Westmore, the company of Westmore's property, and Ziegler's property, and come back out on Freeway Drive just before we go up over top of the freeway. And we have permission from every one of those people to use their property and go across it at this point. And so all we need is this final link, and we have a permanent trail. And the, the area that we're talking about on the east side of, of Zurich is about 20 feet wide. We require a minimum of 12 feet, but most of the time we go 16 feet. And there's plenty of room there to do that.
Is that the smaller one?
Yeah, yeah.
So when you're coming from the west on a snowmobile, you cross Zurich Street?
Yeah.
And then take a right?
Yeah.
And come down? And you say that the rubber mats over the sidewalks is effective?
Oh, yes. Yeah, you can check with Lionel Lakes. They're well aware of what we've done for the masks. Actually, we even put them on a 110-foot bridge that crosses Rice Creek in Lionel Lakes, so right by Shawmanix Golf Course every year.
Right.
So they're four-foot wide mats. We usually put three of them out, so we're covering 12 feet wide. And so they're big, thick, heavy mats. They don't go anywhere. Once the winter come, they're froze down.
Would you protect the curb and gutter on Zurich Street as well, then?
We wouldn't have a method to do that.
Right.
If they don't have the curb, we would get it without help.
Right.
Has anyone else, any questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor and Council, since this matter came to you through public open forum, your, your general rules for open forum would refer this to another meeting. That would give you time to do any investigation you want to do or... That would give you time to do any investigation you want to do, or at least have time to reflect on it. Also, since it's not on the agenda, the public isn't aware that it's being discussed tonight, so by having it on another agenda, that gives the public notice that it's on an agenda.
Is this something we have to sign a contract with them allowing it?
I don't believe so.
As long as you give us something in writing that's permitting us to do it, that's what we need.
And so your concern is having it done fast enough so that you can do your signage out in the swamp before? And the forecast looks like it's in your favor for two weeks.
At the present time.
So then do we make a motion to put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
So we can, I would kind of like to go look at those rubber mats. That sounds interesting. That would give us time to do that. It would still be called out. If it passes next time, then you're-
Okay.
You'd be all set for next year.
Okay.
So, someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion is in favor to take it up at the next meeting.
And you're just crossing a sidewalk with those mats? You don't go down the sidewalk?
No, just crossing them.
So if you'll come back in two weeks-
Okay.
You'll be on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, they use those, those mats on the bike trail in Forest Lake, over the bridges.
Are they there now?
No, they pull them out in the spring. They're quite heavy, seem pretty effective.
Anyone else for public open forum? If not, then let's move on to number eight, which is the, a motion for the local board of equalization meeting. And in the amended agenda, you'll see that some days are not available. Monday, April twenty-second, Thursday, the twenty-fifth, and Monday, May sixth. So the issue is that we have to have it between, what dates, Elizabeth?
April eleventh and May tenth.
So between the eleventh and May tenth, we must have this meeting?
And the county requires, requires us to give them two choices.
So, and we can have it any day of the week except Sunday and Wednesday and Saturday. So, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And how long does it usually take? Just a couple hours, isn't it?
You know, it varies, it has varied over the years, but it just depends on how many people come before you, so it can be anywhere from a half hour to two hours.
And we start at seven, and then when we're done, we're done, after everyone's been heard. So everybody want to take out your calendars and see?
What's the dates between?
Between May eleventh, or April eleventh and May tenth.
So do you just want to know when, what dates would not work for us that might be easiest?
The county, the form is on page fifteen, so the county requires you to give, to give them two dates. So I, I did call them, and they said these are the, the dates that are not available, those were already filled with other local board of appeal and equalization dates.
The ones that you have in red here?
And the ones in red, yes.
So someone is already having their meeting that the county must attend somewhere else?
Multiple meetings. What they do is they have three or four staff that go out to these meetings, but these dates have already filled up with three or four meetings.
And we would like to do it sooner than later, I think, just to have it out of the way?
How about April twenty-third?
I am available that day.
I am too.
That's Tuesday. Any?
Yeah, I'm available any day.
Yeah?
Yep.
Shall I? All right, everybody, Tuesday, seven P.M.
And your second choice?
The day after the council meeting.
Um, April, April, or Thursday, April twenty-fifth, there's a, a date that's on the, that's already been closed.
What about the following week?
About two weeks later.
What about the Monday before? So we just, Monday, the twenty-second? Oh, no.
Yeah.
The seventh, May seventh.
Which is another Tuesday. And why do we give them two dates, just so they can be sure to have somebody available?
They've always required two dates, and I think it's just the availability, they try to look and schedule everybody at least one of their two choices.
Okay. And Jeff would like May seventh, Tuesday?
First for me.
Everybody?
It doesn't bother me.
So when you send in your application, underline the first one, Elizabeth?
Okay.
We prefer. All right. The next thing will be the engineer's report. Dennis?
I just have one informational item, if you want to take one of these and pass it down. It's just a copy of an email I received from Anoka County, answering your question from last meeting about the timing of the county's construction projects this summer. So, you'd, you'd asked specifically about Kettle River Boulevard, and that's first on the list, and they're anticipating construction in, from June to August for that one. Then I asked them about the other projects they have as well, so there's a list there of the Broadway Avenue shouldering would be May through July. The Signal Project at Lexington and Broadway would be April through June. And then the Cassaf fifty-four realignment, they're planning on starting as early as March through June, and then finishing up a few minor items on the roundabout and Lake Drive project would be in February. So a lot of activity in that May-June timeframe, but the Kettle River Boulevard one is actually the later of the, of the list.
And that's the one I had the question from someone about, early June through early August.
And these are their best guesses at this time. The first, the first one especially is a little bit more contractor-dependent because it's part of a much larger payment rehab contract. So, that's what the county was able to share at this time.
But they're saying that they plan to be done with the fifty-four alignment by June?
That's their plans at this time, which is fairly aggressive. But I know they did get the roundabout done pretty quickly as well, short timeframe.
So everybody's aware of what we're talking about? You know where the roundabout is by Holiday, so the southern leg of that, that's what they're going to build out by June, starting in March and hopefully be done by June. So it'll go behind the Holiday Station and hook up to fifty-four. Okay, thank you.
Did they say anything about a three-foot shoulder on Kettle River?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I think that kind of matches what's north farther right. Yep.
So they are putting a three-foot shoulder?
Yes.
Do you know if they posted Howard Lake for a weight limit yet?
I don't believe that's been done. Anybody have any other questions?
That's all I had.
That's it? So now let's go to the attorney's report.
No report.
The mayor and city council's report. I have nothing special to say, to report, I guess, but it's exciting that these things are going to be happening so soon in the year, and hopefully by the end of the summer it'll all be done. Danny?
I have nothing to report.
Yeah?
You got mine earlier.
Uh, I just wanted to ask about the posting Howard Lake. Was that going to be done or not done, or?
We've had some discussion about it, so we weren't, so we didn't post it because we were having some discussion. So I'm not sure where we're at at the moment, but I think it's going to stay the same.
Thought we made a motion at the earlier meeting to post it.
I don't know how far you want to get into it.
Well, I, okay, you're next anyway, right? Do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do.
Oh.
All right, go ahead. You talk, and then we'll go back.
Okay. I just attended the Fall Fest planning meeting for the first time for this year, and they were representatives from the Lions and the Senior Center. Denny has said he'll help with the car show again, and there's a lot of good people that are out there planning these, these things. The couple of things that they mentioned that were new was possibly a farmer's market and maybe a Friday night kickoff with a movie in the park. They're going to look at, into that, and also having the tickets that they sell cover all the different foods and, and rides and that sort of thing, rather than piecemealing it this year. So I think they've got great ideas, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Let's talk about, I've had conversations with Elizabeth and Jim about, I think that, I believe that the, the last council said they were thinking of seven mile, or seven-ton limit. Correct. And the rest of the roads in Columbus are five-ton limit. Correct. And so what we were discussing is that they should be five-ton limit just to match everything else and make it all uniform, and what were the pros and cons? So I think we had that conversation last week, and then we didn't come to a conclusion for sure, and so it's still a work in progress.
Stand by.
Yep. Which is why it's not posted yet.
I just noticed a cement truck following me the other day down, and what, wait a minute, I think they could go down with it.
And that was two of the, the main reasons for it, was to keep the big trucks off of Zurich Street, which is now a residential street, and to control all of the cement trucks coming up and down Howard Lake Drive, which is also a residential street. So, so we're working on it.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so the other half of my report is going to be the park report. All right.
Good evening. So mayor and city council members, Chris King and Sandy Wood are part of the Park Advisory Board. Sandy is the chairperson.
Hi.
Hi.
We met last Thursday, and one of the items that was discussed was coming up with a policy for field reservations. It seems the city has kind of gone through a lot with stress. Lori has been under a lot of stress in the past years with the way fields have been reserved. Our fields are very popular, and everybody wants to use them, and it used to be first come, first served. So to make it easier on the city, they started doing, this year, I think, was the first year, applications being put in. And what came out then was for the park board to come up with a policy going forward, how to handle it. And it's been decided, starting in 2020, that any groups that want to reserve our fields need to fill out an application and request the dates with games taking precedence. And I think we decided that the applications would have to be in the second Monday or first Monday of January, whatever, second Monday. And then Lori would have it back with the games first again, and then any practices to everybody by the first Tuesday or something in February. There's a timeframe, and if people do not get theirs in, they're put to the back of the list. Also, when the applications are put in and then the schedules are out, invoicing will be done at that time. So Lori feels that this will be the most fair way to do it. People supposedly are lining up, what has it been, December? Or whenever it was that they're there, ready at six o'clock in the morning to be first come, first serve, and then it puts a lot of stress on, on the city to organize this and make it fair. So next year, the policy will go in. Lori's gone through and set up a schedule kind of in that same format for this year, so she kind of tried it, and it seemed to work good. So that was one of the big things we did. We talked about the roundabouts, and we do have a question for you, Mr. Griffith. One of the items that came up was J.W. was talking, was seeing people driving over, that we were kind of a little hesitant on what we do on the roundabouts because we're afraid of damage. And Bob, I believe, brought up, that's his name, correct, yep, about boulders and talking to somebody and doing some type of design and putting boulders out there and that, liability to the city. Now, we know anybody can sue no matter what, but is there certain liabilities that we should kind of, with items that we place on there that we should stay away from, or is it their fault?
Well, I think generally, it's a good question. I think we've been asked that question before, and I'm kind of looking at the engineer. The, the, the reason, as I understand it, the reason for having the mound essentially is so people don't go over and through. So there is some understanding that people may run into a roundabout, so we would look at kind of technical standards for what can be placed in that.
And we did a little bit of research on that when that topic came up a year or so ago, and MINDA, even federal guidelines, there's no restrictions on what can be landscape or hardscape in a roundabout.
Yep.
And if, you know, I'm sure you've driven through other ones that have walls and trees, and, so from a liability perspective, the city would not be liable if there was a, an accident or damage, same as other obstructions that are in roadway right-of-ways. But they do tend to mound them or actually put landscaping in them to, to prevent line of sight. They don't want headlights or people looking over. They'd rather have them have some type of obstruction if it's just a mound of dirt or something much nicer.
So at this point, we really haven't come up with any decisions. I know J.W. is, is kind of voiced some concerns with putting certain things out there because of damage, and, and do we want to spend the money to have to replace things and that? So we're kind of looking into some options. So we haven't set on anything yet. And we kind of talked too with what's going on down by Holiday and that whole roundabout area and the businesses and whatever else that, you know, to hurry and do something might not be the best option at this time until we see kind of how that starts to develop too. Just a consideration at this time. The third thing was we got a request from Eagle Scout that wanted to do, what was it? A project for the Eagle Scout project, and it would be a veterans memorial bench in the park and then plant a tree. He is going to come in with a presentation and, at our April meeting, and kind of show us, we, the city reached back to him because maintenance is an issue. We don't want anything that's going to cause more maintenance trimming and anything else. And then there were some other ideas about not just having just a little bench, but maybe since it's going to be for veterans and that, maybe putting a little more work into it to make it look a little better. So the, the kid's going to come in in April and talk to us and do a presentation. The last thing that came up is, I know the, it was brought to our attention that you would rather have somebody present than having a liaison, and it was kind of the consensus of the group that we would like a liaison to be at our meetings. I know Sandy would, especially the budget meetings, have somebody there. And if there's a main reason that you don't want to continue having somebody there, or, but it's kind of the consensus that we would like somebody there. Sure. I've been on, on the park board for twenty, twenty-five years, something like that. And it's very helpful to have someone from the council at our meetings to listen to what we have to say, kind of guide us. If you think that what we have in mind is not appropriate or something that we should be doing, we'd rather hear it at the meeting and, and finalize our plans to, or whatever our presentation to you is, than bring something to you, have it thrown back to us, you know. Budget meeting, most definitely, somebody from the council. To help us money-wise, guide us. We only meet four times a year, and it would only be three now since we've had one meeting. And I think it's just very beneficial to the, to our board to have someone there rather than us come to you. I know, I heard that the reason you wanted to do it that way is that you would be able to meet our members when we come before you to present our, our report. I just think, I just think it-
I just think, I just think it's, it'd be most beneficial if we had a council member there rather than reporting quarterly or whatever, whenever we meet.
And it was kind of a consensus of, of the board, so that's where we're at.
So let's make a deal. Because this is really nice, everybody. Wasn't this a good presentation? And we're up to date. So let us put it back on the agenda, or on the agenda for next time. We'll talk about it, we'll choose a liaison, or somebody will volunteer for the liaison. But then, when we do our, your, when the liaison reports, can one or two of you come with and just do what you just did? Because this is, you know, you've both been on there longer than any of us have.
Not really. This is only like my third meeting.
Well, but anyway, so let's do it that way.
That would be fine.
We'll find somebody. And then when you do your report, or quarterly after your meeting, come talk to us and put the liaison in front, then you guys tell them what to say.
Perfect. We appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
One item, Mr. Mayor, before, before the report's over. So the policy that you discussed, so the council adopts policy for the city. So what you would do is put it into a form that the council could then adopt. So they get to put their stamp of approval on any policies in the city, and doesn't mean that you can't, you know, look at putting that into effect next year, but just to formalize it.
Okay, so we need to bring it back as a policy and?
And it would be in, in the agenda and voted on.
Lori can write it up and we can just bring it back to the meeting?
Yeah, we made a recommendation, what, of what our policy would be at the meeting. So can Lori just?
Right, and we'll just, we'll write it in.
And then you'll adopt it.
Yep.
Nope, that's perfect.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I have one more question, ladies. So when you talk to people, everybody really likes the parks. You just run into people here and there. And so then you are really popular. You said about the, with the ballfields. So what do you charge for a ballgame these days? Anybody?
Fifteen dollars.
I think it's fifteen dollars.
And is that?
For four hours.
Is that the going rate, or is that?
I think. And I don't think it's. It rains. It's always going to be raining. If we had more fields, they'd fill them.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, thank you. All right. The Public Information Coordinator, your heart?
No report.
All right, thank you. City Administrators' Report.
I'm just gonna, I'm going to go back to the Mayor and City Council members' report because I had an item listed there for information. So I just wanted to bring everyone's attention as it came up at the last meeting about the animal control services and whether or not we would be able to get a report. And so we were able to get a report from Dover Kennel and impound services about the services that were provided. And in this case, they, we had hired them in April because we had lost our contract with Hillcrest in the beginning of, of last year. And so what the services were for April through December, we had several kennel inspections, and the charge for those inspections was $131.50. And then we had three dogs that were picked up in that timeframe, two of which were, the owners retrieved them or claimed them. So the owners picked up the fees, whereas the other dog unfortunately had to be held for a certain amount of days because we're required by statute to hold them for a certain amount of days before they go to the Humane Society. And then the city bears the cost of the impound services. So that's the $140. So in the bills this evening, we did get invoiced for 2018 services, and it was a total of the $131.50 and the $140.
Elizabeth, I have a question on the, the kennel fees. Does that get assessed to the kennel owner or to the city?
To the city.
Why is it not assessed to the kennel owner?
You know, when they first applied for the interim use permit, I think the city felt that we were going to do it the most economical way that we could, and they were charged $500 for escrow, and I think it was a $200 application fee. And there really was not a discussion of returning those costs for services to them. So at the time, or when they renew, if that's something we want to do, that should probably be included in the conditions that we will perform, we will perform an inspection, but then they would have to reimburse the city for service.
How is it normally done in other cities?
You know, I don't know very many cities that allow kennels, which means you have over four dogs and up to 10 dogs. So I'm unfamiliar with what other cities do for, for kennel fees.
Okay.
But we could, Mr. Mayor, council member, we could certainly by ordinance, make that part of the fee structure. So that would be a consideration that, that you could bring back.
Okay.
May I ask, Elizabeth, so like, for example, the first one, Hurley's on Broadway, so it's .9 times 15, is that three quarters an hour times 15 bucks for 13.50?
It was .9, yeah, I'm assuming he did, you know, 10 units every 10, you know, to every 10 minutes, and then it was times 15, so it was 13.50, yep.
So that was their total expense for the, that's the total cost of his inspection, was 15 bucks or 13.50?
It was 13.50, and if you notice, he didn't, he didn't charge us for travel time or overhead, so it was very economical way of providing service.
Thank you. Yeah, it doesn't seem terrible.
No, it seems awfully cheap. It's been doing it for a hobby.
Anything else? Oh, yes, Elizabeth, sure enough.
I have, I have two other things under my report, and the first is, I was, I received a call from one of our business owners, and he asked me a question about whether or not we could have a residential zone business in the commercial district. And so I told him that I would bring the question to the council. So just as some background, in the residential district, in the rural residential district, we have houses and, and that's what's allowed, and it's a permitted use in the district. And by permit, which is interim use permit, we allow them to run a business from their home. In the commercial district, whether it's on Lake Drive or in the freeway district, we have homes in that district, and they're, I'll just call they're grandfathered in. So they were established many years ago. We no longer allow single-family homes, but we do have an abundance of single-family homes. When I say abundance, there's probably 25, 30, 40 homes. But the district is zoned commercial industrial. And so the question was, and this happened to be on Lake Drive, so if there's a home on Lake Drive, could they run a business from the home and/or garage? And the code today does not allow that. The code today says, you're grandfathered in as a house, you know what I mean, for, for a house, and the, and the permitted use is you can have an accessory building, so we'll allow you to build an accessory building with the house. But then the residential zone business is not allowed in that district. It's not a use under any permit. The previous council indicated that they felt that the residential use was grandfathered in, and they felt that if you wanted a business, then you demolished the house and you establish a business. If you want to live there and it's a residential use, they would allow it because it's grandfathered in, but that's as far as they would allow it to go. It was just going to be a residential use. So the question by this person is, would you be willing to change the code or change the interpretation of the code and allow, in this case, a business in the garage?
Anyone have input?
I think it would be a good idea. We want to nurture businesses. To begin, that's what we get, incubator for a good business to begin. I think it's a good idea, we should change our code.
Anybody else?
Would it be specifically for that resident? It wouldn't be something that could be passed on to the next owner if they sold their house? Or how would that work?
Currently, in the residential district, the interim use permit is granted to the person. It cannot be passed on. In other words, it doesn't run with the land like a conditional use permit. And it's only good for up to five years. So you would have to create a use in that commercial district with criteria to allow for those different kinds of things that you want to happen in that district.
Mayor and Council, I think this has come up, at least in one other context, where someone was looking to retrofit a home to bring it up to a commercial standard. And I think the, the issue that we might have is the change in occupancy under the building code. So once you go from a residential use to a commercial use, principally, the building code would apply as a commercial use. And so the last person who tried to do this found out that to retrofit that residential building to meet the commercial occupancy didn't make as much sense as knocking it down. So I think if you, if you directed us to investigate those issues, you either could say, no, we're not interested, and then that would end the inquiry, or we would have to then investigate with the building official what kind of occupancy change a garage use for commercial purposes would entail. In the residential district, the reason that doesn't, that same kind of inquiry doesn't come up is because you're using a, a building that's principally a home. You know, so you're saying, we have an ancillary or an accessory use that is a home business, but it's principally a home, so you don't have to meet commercial occupancies in that, in that building because it's not being principally used for commercial.
And in this case, they want to be able to, in this case, it's a renter, it's not a, a property owner, which is a different concept than the residential district. The residential district says you have to be the property owner in order to have a business in the home. And in, in this particular case, it is a renter. But what they want to do is be able to live in the home and have their business in the garage.
Well, I would like to put in a little opposition, sorry, Danny. Especially if it's a renter. We have a case of that up on Potomac, I think, near Broadway. And you've been chasing him around for about five years, and he's a renter who doesn't follow anyone's rules. And all the neighbors are always in a tizzy, and, and I'm willing to discuss this at a future City Council workshop, if anybody wants to go through it. But I would say for now, I'm not willing to, to consider it. Leave things like that until we get our legs under us, as new guys. Anybody? Can you wait three months?
I'd rather discuss it now and get it over with.
Uh-huh.
I'd rather discuss it now and get it over with. Because I have, we turned down a few on the last council. We turned down a few people that wanted to have a home business in their home, and it was on a commercial property, and I thought it was wrong because it was, it should, commercial property, like this guy wants to have a business in his garage. Every, every business would have to be evaluated for, for what it's, you know, if a guy wants to have a dentist and have 20 people come in through the front door, then he's got to change it to office. But just, we should look at every, one of these that come in front of us individually and make sure it qualifies or not. Like, like you're a renter, if we're a renter, I would say, no. A renter has no right to do, do anything like this here. But that's my feelings.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a little more guidance. So if you decide this is a discussion you want to have, there's, there's several parts of it. So we'd take a code amendment, we'd have to look at how it intersects with the building code. So it would probably be an appropriate item for a workshop, if, if there's an interest in, in sending it there. The other thing I would point out that we cannot legally distinguish between renters of property and owners of property. A renter is an owner by virtue of the lease. So we have to treat all property owners the same, whether they, they lease property, own it in, you know, in fee or otherwise. So under, there's a constitutional protection for anybody who's a property owner by virtue of being a renter, a fee owner, they're all treated the same under the zoning and, under the codes. So if, if somebody said to me, as your legal counsel, can I have a home occupation in the rural residential district and I lease? I would say you absolutely have to give them that opportunity. So just going forward, I, I want to be clear about that. I wasn't aware that we made that distinction in our code, but you cannot treat a renter different than another property owner.
What I want to bring up is the thing that Jesse just brought up, the person that's renting. And we can't do nothing to him legally, we can't move him out or change him because he's, and he's still renting. Elizabeth knows what I'm talking about, Jesse knows what I'm talking about. I don't, you should, that's a really screwed up.
Yeah, because you can't prosecute him because they're not the landowner.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's the problem. Then, and the landowner then is, is absent, and then he doesn't want to take control.
Well, let's deal with that as a separate item. I mean, we, there's always a way to require compliance with, with the code, and I'm not aware of what that circumstance, but I just want to be real clear that we treat renters and owners identically in Columbus because that's the constitutional requirement.
Whether it's commercial or residential zone?
Yes, if someone decides to lease commercial property and you want to give them a home business opportunity, same thing as if they own it. Because that lease of a property, whether, you know, it's, you know, two years or 10 years, that's a, that's a ownership right. It's not, it's not the same interest as a fee interest, but you have a right to possess that property, and so we have to treat them the same way.
This is getting more involved than I thought it was. We should do it at a workshop.
We should do it at a workshop.
Yeah.
And, and another point to ponder until we get to the workshop is, as we try to develop Lake Drive and the freeway corridor and anything that we want developed, once you tell somebody they can put a dentist office in their woodshed, that's very important to that person. So that would stop or slow down or hinder developing a nice big building like we've seen come in. There's a couple of big electric companies over there, the man caves. But if you've got somebody with a house with a who-knows-what inside of it, or they think this is a car repair thing or something, that's slowing down the progress that the city would like and would like the tax base from for larger, more upscale buildings in both areas, the freeway and the Lake Drive. So I'd say, if we want to hash it out, I'm not in favor of it all.
I think we should go workshop and we'll have a good discussion.
We can workshop it and.
We definitely need a workshop.
So put that on the list for a workshop, Elizabeth?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. There.
At, at the microphone, Mr. Mayor.
Come up to the microphone, name and address.
So we can page everything on the record.
Joe Pribble, 1467 Eighth Avenue, Southeast Forest Lake. I want to support Danny's comment. The Bear Home Project, 100,000 square foot building that's going up, that started in the garage in Forest Lake. Support. You know, you got to give people opportunities, so.
Thank you.
Kind of help a business. I just wanted to let you get some background on that one.
My last, my last bullet is, is basically question and notice. The EDA meeting was canceled as, at our last EDA meeting, we discussed having a special meeting because we wanted to have the opportunity to have a developer come in and talk to you about their development. After I called them, they realized that one of the parties wasn't available, so we ended up canceling the meeting on today, the 23rd. And now they are available the, either February 13th or February 27th. And as the EDA Executive Director, I am able to call a meeting. But my question to the council and EDA members present is, do you have a preference of a date because they are both available, either the 13th or the 27th at 6:00, or would you rather have a different date for me to call the meeting?
So that would be an hour before the regular City Council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Was anybody planning to skip out on the 13th or the 27th?
27th would work good for me.
27th's good?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine for me.
Yep. Okay.
The, the 27th, the Fall Fest is meeting at 5:15. If I came in 15 minutes late or something, is, are we cool?
Yep.
I will send out a notice. That concludes my report.
And then we're down to announcements and reminders. The City Council Workshop will be on February 6th at 4:00 p.m. Is everybody able to come to that?
I don't think I'm going to make it. I don't know yet.
Okay.
I won't know for a week, whether I can make it or not.
I'll be absent. The next planning commission. The next Planning Commission meeting will be the 6th at 7:00 p.m. And the calendar of meetings is on page 19, which is everything we just talked about. And so if there's nothing more from anyone, I'll call for a motion for adjournment meeting.
It's all moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it?